And the first order of business is the invocation and pledge, please.
Almighty God, we thank you for safety and freedom as we meet today. God, we thank you for the reports and the effort and the data that goes into them. God help us to make good decisions in planning expenses and growth of the town. Thank you for those that protect us both here and abroad. In your sins' name we pray amen.
And do you want to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got Jason Vernoy with us, our engineer. It's going quite a lengthy discussion about the sewer and water. So I'm gonna go and call Sean Moses, Sergeant Moses up to give his report.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just the sheriff's office would like to remind everyone that we've had a number of burglaries and murder vehicles that have occurred, twelve of them in town in the three neighborhoods, Academy Hills, Clark's Rest, and Leonard's Grant. So just want people to be extra vigilant, locking their vehicles. There is a suspect that has been developed against share of that department, if you have the charge. But we're definitely looking at a suspect in this case. It's been happening throughout the town, so not just Leonard Town here.
Yep.
And also happened to say that Kristy Nelson will be returning to the town, so there's a heaven heard, she'll be returning probably about the end of the first week, beginning part of the second week. I don't know how the schedule actually works out in April.
April, right.
So glad to have you back.
Yep, great.
Any questions, Mr.?
Were the break-ins, were they, were the cars locked or unlocked?
Everyone's cars was unlocked. So we go back to the addition of lock or lose type of thing.
Yeah.
Still follow the police report, but yeah, all cars that have been burglarized have been unsecured.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else for Sergeant Moses? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hewitt, like you said, we do have about a half hour program with our engineers. Okay, if you want to sit through that, that's fine.
Thank you. I'm just here to find out what's going on, give you a little bit of report, what's happening with commissioners. I expect to see any more.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Rebecca, treasurer's report.
Okay, in your packet was the information for the period ending February. I did not need to transfer any money between the local government investment pool and the operating account. We are sixty-seven percent through with the budget here. And I'll just make a few comments on the income statement. The end of February, we did receive the second quarterly income tax distribution from the state of Maryland. And I can tell you that normally the first three quarters distributions are the same, and that was the case here. I do still think we will not reach the budgeted income tax. You can see we're not quite at fifty percent on your income statement. So right now, my best guess is that we would be forty or fifty thousand dollars short on the income tax draft one nineteen. Hopefully, what we will see at the end of June is after tax returns are filed, maybe we get a bump, but I do not know that that's gonna happen. Again, combine that with the deficit in the accommodation tax of twenty-two point five thousand. I do have some other revenue sources that will have small surpluses, but not enough to offset that. And I'll bring to your attention, there is an item called interest income on the first page there that looks like it's way over budget. But the majority of that gets allocated out at the end of the year to the enterprise fund.
I was gonna ask you about that, so, okay, thank you.
And snow removal is currently nine thousand dollars over budget. So that will affect the road maintenance projects for this year. I continue to work on the audit RFP. So based on my draft schedule, that will be distributed and available for vendors next week. And then I have a procedure of receiving those, reviewing those, and then bringing back to council recommendation. The other item on my agenda is the council approval or disapproval of extending the trash contract. And you have received much information. I tried to summarize it in the memo. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read that. So based on the meeting that we had with the contractor, Good Companies, I'm recommending that we assign the contract from affordable to Good Companies. That the council would approve a two-year extension. That all the pricing information was provided to you in that package. They are committed to maintain the recycling program. And just this afternoon, I sent council a link to a video about all the problems that jurisdictions are having with recycling programs. And some who have just taken curbside out altogether. And for the council to decide whether this is the appropriate time to change to once-per-week trash collection. And there was some discussion at workshop, and there was a question about what days that would happen. Good Companies today responded that they can't guarantee what days they would be able to service. Ideally, the group wanted Monday and Tuesday. They can't commit to that, and I'm waiting for more information to know why. I'm not sure that council needs to make that decision tonight, so we can wait for some more information. These changes wouldn't take effect until July first. So we have a little bit more time to decide if you want to change to once-a-week once-per-week trash and maintaining the once-per-week recycling for the residential customers. But we do need to decide tonight if you do want to extend a contract to Good Companies.
Okay. Thoughts, questions?
Rebecca, I remember you said, and I think earlier, that if somebody wants to do, I guess, have more trash put out, I guess, should say a week, they could purchase a separate toter, correct? Is that what they could do?
Good Companies would provide that. It needs to be in a Good Companies toter. It's not like they could put out a second container and it would be picked up. But there would be a one-time charge of seventy-eight dollars for a Good Companies toter.
And then, so if we go to once a week, and let's just say it doesn't work out, are we allowed to revisit that contract to go back to twice a week? Or are we locked in for those two years at once a week?
He didn't directly answer my question. I think we need to have an in-person meeting to know what the true answer to that would be. My reasonable person opinion is, once they commit to once a week, they're gonna adjust everything else on their side, and it's gonna be really hard. And they probably wouldn't agree to keep the price that's in the bid document for two times a week.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that decision will come later.
Okay.
Really, today, we need to look at the extension, and then we can make a decision, more informed decision as to whether we get one or two days with the service.
And then, as the budget process happens, I could give you more firm numbers versus the estimated numbers of what it would cost to the customer to make that change. I've just done some estimating right now.
So when does the, the current contract expire?
June thirtieth.
And you've checked other sources, and really, you're recommending that we stay with the Good contract, go with the Good contract.
There has been some interest from smaller companies in the southern Maryland area. In the memo, I noted that waste management has never been a little better for the past two bid cycles. Republic was not interested in servicing the municipal account. And the other two small southern Maryland companies are keeping tabs on where we are with this extension process. But neither company, which was in existence each bid cycle, bid on the contract. And I just have concerns about the ability to service it with the manpower and the equipment.
And there really hasn't been any complaints with Good for the last year or so, since they've taken over?
Intermittent.
Right, I mean.
Very few.
Right. But overall, the service has been
Yes.
very good, yep. Anyone care to make a motion?
I just would like to understand a little better. And I know we've talked about this a lot already. Good has already acquired Affordable.
That's correct.
But they wish to not use the Affordable name anymore, which is why they're
Right, they want to dissolve that company. There's one member in that company when it was acquired by Mr. Good last May. He's the only member, so he would like to dissolve the company.
And so they
And just make everything uniform in town under the Good Companies name.
And it sounds like the new contract would just be directly with Good.
That's correct.
And we don't have a contract with them now?
No.
So just making sure I do understand correctly what the mayor said, too. We, today, we do not need to make the decision on whether it's once or twice a week.
Correct, we're not changing any service at all at this point.
All right. I move to assign the current Affordable refuse and recycling contract to Good Companies Incorporated and to accept the proposed unit prices from the three twenty, twenty-fourteen bid adjustment by the CPI clause excluding two nineteen adjustment.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I skipped over the minutes, so we could go back to that. Everyone received a copy of the minutes?
I apologize, I have one question on the motion we just made. The extension is for one year or for two years?
Two years.
Which was per the original contract?
Original contract, yes.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments, questions on the minutes? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the February eleventh, twenty-nineteen minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, anything from planning and zoning, Jada?
Actually, no. Last planning and zoning meeting was held in January, and as of right now, we don't want to change all the mortgage. So we're pushing it back to April again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michelle.
Okay. First item under my report is the presentation by GHD. The council had previously requested a presentation by the town engineers at GHD to review the water capacity management study, the sewer study, and the expansion, well, the sewer study for the expansion. As we have three major projects moving forward, the water tower construction, a well, a new well, and then the expansion at the wastewater treatment plant. And then, we also would have some discussion based on this about future impact fee revisions. So we have with us Jason Vernoy. He's been working with us for several years now. And so he's prepared a PowerPoint for you covering some of the information we talked about at the last workshop, just to reiterate some things. And then, we can have some questions and answers after that.
If anybody wants to move up so they can see the presentation here, certainly welcome.
First, thank you for having me. It's great to be here, and we got a tour of the new building, or the new council room last time. That looks great. So I'll jump into kind of the project updates that we've been working on. As Michelle said, myself and GHD generally have been working with the town for over twenty years now. You can see some of the projects that we've helped with on the screen there, and some of the recent tasks that'll probably be the focus of today's discussion include the water supply capacity management plan, the water storage analysis, and the technical memo that we prepared, as well as the wastewater treatment plant expansion study. So to start off the discussion, we have to talk about growth within the town. This is just an excerpt from a Baltimore Sun article not too long ago, where they were talking about some of the fastest-growing areas in Maryland, and Leonard Town was ranked number one for that period. So they got a nice picture of the town square as part of that article. And this just kind of highlights one of the challenges that we've been dealing with for both water and wastewater service within the town is trying to keep up with that consistent growth. So to define some terms first, as we get into this, we usually track development in equivalent dwelling units, or EDUs. And traditionally, that just refers to a single-family residential abode and the typical usage that goes along with that. So you can think of just, you know, your kind of typical house within the service area, that's one EDU. A lot of times, we use connection as a synonym for that. But it's a little bit misleading because connection can also refer to commercial development, where one connection might be equivalent to multiple EDUs, because, you know, if you have a business or something, the water or wastewater usage for that one connection might exceed the typical usage for a single-family residence. So then, we would assign multiple EDUs to that business. EDUs can also be allocated for future development before they actually go into service. So that's just a distinction to make as we start getting into the details of some of the growth projections. That allocated EDUs can be different from in-service EDUs. And in-service EDUs, we refer to generally the connections that are actually producing wastewater or requiring water service. So the town puts together a growth table, and I think you've seen a version of this. This is just an excerpt from that larger growth table. And the growth table would break down the projected growth by the development category, which you can see on the left side of this table. So there's different individual developments within town, so the Clark's Rest, Anton's, there's some of the names that you can see on there. There's also just generally existing development, so the existing customers for the water and wastewater systems that the town serves. And those are all included on the table, as well as the associated EDUs for each year, which show up as columns in that growth table. So you can see for any given year, how many EDUs each category of development is contributing to the overall total. So you sum up the numbers in each one of those columns, and at the bottom, you end up with a total number of EDUs or equivalent dwelling units that are being served by the town's water and wastewater systems for that given year. So that's important because it gives us a picture of when we would expect some of those connections to actually come online, come into service, when we need to have capacity to serve those connections. And then, as we're planning some of these larger, long-term projects, we want to look at that, you know, generally twenty-year term, and what's the, what we would term the build-out growth going to be at the end of that twenty-year period as we're planning these investments, because you don't want to have to go to construction every five, ten years. You want to be planning for a longer term to capitalize on contractor being on site and just the economy of scale for some of these projects. So in this case, we're looking at the, an excerpt from the table from the water system. So you can see in that bottom right corner, it would be a total of four thousand two hundred and forty-six EDUs that are projected for the twenty-year term. And then, the other thing to highlight is just kind of the numbers in the middle of the table. That would be your active EDUs for that given category of development and that given year. So that's how we interpret the table. So it's important to recognize that these growth tables and the growth projections are just the best estimate, that, you know, we're never gonna have enough information to be able to exactly define what the growth trends are gonna be like in town. And the farther out we get, the more unknowns there are, and the more it could potentially change. So it's important for us just to document our assumptions, to show what's going into these growth projections, and to do our best to try and capture what we think will be growth within the service area and plan around that. Inevitably, conditions will change, and as we move forward, as long as those assumptions are documented, we're able to look back and say, okay, what were we planning for? What's the actual conditions? How do we adapt to that? Is there anything that we need to change? Does this modify the town's long-term plan? So that all comes into play. But I think the important message is just that this is something that all municipalities deal with, that you do your best to project growth and then adapt as you move forward. Specifically for Leonard Town, the projections for the water and wastewater systems will be slightly different, because you have subsets of the customer base that only get water or wastewater service. So one of the big ones would be the Metcom customers, which are currently wastewater service only. There's also a handful of customers outside the town limits, which currently only have water service. And then, some residents on Point Lookout Road would be another example, where they're currently on wells. But, you know, by the end of twenty years, may be expected to join the public water supply. So those are things that we need to account for as different between the two systems. So we wrap all that up, and for the twenty-year build-out period that we were looking at for these projects, it results in about four thousand two hundred and forty-six EDUs on the water side and four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight EDUs for the wastewater side. And most of that difference between the two systems is for Metcom customers. Overall, that assumes about eighty percent growth over twenty years from existing conditions. And if you do that annually, it's about three percent annual growth rate. So that's not too far off from what Leonard Town has been experiencing recently. That article that we pulled up before was three point three percent growth for that year, so you can see we're in that neighborhood. So it reflects the growth that the town is expecting and what we're gonna plan around for the upcoming projects. So that gives us how many connections we're expecting going forward, but then we need to convert that into how much flow we expect on both the water and wastewater sides. So just generally, the state regulators, if you pick any general location in Maryland, they generally default to two hundred and fifty gallons per day for both water and wastewater from each EDU. That's just the flow contribution from each one of those connections. But if you look at historically, Leonard Town's water and wastewater systems, the water demand per EDU is about two hundred and seventeen gallons per day, based on recent analysis. And the wastewater generation is about a hundred and eighty-two gallons per day. So you can see that's, you know, significantly lower than the two hundred and fifty gallon per day default that the state likes to use for planning purposes. And so as a result of that, for future planning purposes, the state still wants Leonard Town to assume two hundred and fifty gallons per day for future water system connections. But they did recognize, because the wastewater generation per EDU for Leonard Town is quite a bit lower than their default value, they allow two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day per EDU for future planning purposes. So that's what we're using generally to plug into the long-term growth projections for actual flow. So what does that look like in terms of the projections? This is a graph just showing over time, the water demands, this is talking about the water system first. And this is average conditions, so you can see right now, the town is about five hundred and thirteen thousand gallons per day from existing connections. But if we plot out the future connections that we're expecting for each year and assign to those a flow based on two hundred and fifty gallons per day per EDU for all those future connections, you can see how that impacts the overall flow demand. And by the twenty-year build-out period, at the end, we're expecting about nine hundred and eighty-four thousand gallons per day average, which would be about a ninety-two percent increase for the current usage. This is a slightly different version of that same graph, just reflecting drought conditions. So the state says you have to plan around a possible drought condition for the service area, where they assume that the average usage per EDU would increase by about five percent. Some people are already, they're planting more, things like that. So that's what they, the state requires that you use for long-term planning. So that's drought conditions. And then, this next graph is just to kind of highlight potential adaptations to these projections going forward. So you can see the blue one that we were looking at before basically assumes for your existing connections, it's that historical usage of about two hundred and seventeen gallons per day per EDU. For future connections, it's that two hundred and fifty gallon per day planning number. But let's say all the connections end up being about Leonard Town's historical usage of two hundred and seventeen gallons per day per EDU. That's the green line, and you can see the result is that the twenty-year build-out water demand is a little bit lower than the blue line that we're looking at before. And on the other side, if you assume all of a sudden the existing connections to the water system start using all two hundred and fifty gallons per day per EDU that the state says to plan for, that would be that orange line. So then, your twenty-year flow demand might go up a little bit. And then, in terms of the timing, the actual growth projections that these flow projections are based on, those might fluctuate a little bit, so you might have faster development and slower development. So I think the message here is just, you have to keep in mind some alternative scenarios and just know that what you're planning around, make sure you're making reasonable assumptions and proceed with that. And just be aware of kind of a backup plan of what happens if things change. So comparing this against the town's current reliable capacity, since we're talking about water demand here, the reliable capacity is the capacity of the town's active water well, which is currently allocated for seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day average withdrawal. So you can see that's plotted by a horizontal gray line. And starting in our baseline year, which was two thousand seventeen for this analysis, you can see the demand is under the reliable capacity, which is good. But at a certain point, that demand curve crosses the reliable capacity, and that's when we would expect the town to need additional capacity to serve their water needs. So if you draw a line down from where the two curves cross, that kind of gives you a timeframe for when that additional capacity would be needed. So if we take the orange line, that's kind of the more conservative approach of saying every connection is gonna use two hundred and fifty gallons per day per EDU. Then additional capacity might be needed as soon as twenty twenty-two. But that's kind of what we would consider a very conservative approach. That blue line, which is kind of the midline approach, that expects that more capacity would be needed around twenty twenty-five. And then, on the other side, the green line, that's if all the future connections are at Leonard Town's historical usage of two seventeen gallons per day per EDU, then you might not need additional capacity until about twenty twenty-six. So that's how we kind of think about when some of these projects might need to happen. So there's no defined date when this is gonna be needed. It depends on how this growth actually occurs and what the flow patterns are for each connection. But that kind of gives us a window for planning purposes. So as I said, the existing active water well for the town, which is called well number five, has a permitted average withdrawal of seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day, which we term the reliable capacity. So if you look out at the end of the twenty-year build-out period for the water system, that reliable capacity is less than what we're saying the water system flow demand will be. So that results in a flow deficit at the end of the twenty-year period. And in order to address that projected deficit at the end of the twenty-year period, we're recommending a new raw water well be developed to provide additional capacity to meet that deficit. So that could be handled likely through a single new well. The steps involved with adding a new well would be to perform test wells, just to confirm a suitable location where you'll have adequate groundwater supply, and that matches where the demands are in the system. Once you confirm that location, the well itself would be drilled and the casing installed. And then, you would install the well pump. Each well site would have a small disinfection system to treat the water, and then it gets connected into the existing water distribution system and adds that associated capacity. So that would be the process for adding more water supply. Going along with that is water storage. So the town currently has two active water storage tanks, Green Brier tank and the Tudor Hall tank, which combined for about eight hundred thousand gallons of total system storage. Why do you need large storage? It serves a number of benefits. The big ones are providing reliability. So if for some reason you have The big ones are providing reliability, so if for some reason you have an issue with one of your, uh, raw water pumps, especially in the case of Leonard Town where you have a single raw water pump. That gives you, uh, kind of a backup so that you can still continue to serve your customers uh, while that raw water well pump, uh, is being repaired if necessary. And then also just so you can help meet, uh, the peak system demands. That way you don't have to size the raw water well pumps, uh, for your top instantaneous demand. Um, you can size them for closer to average flow and then if, uh, you get kind of a spike in demand, you just draw down the storage tanks, so that helps with pump sizing as well. The storage requirements are based on two separate components. One would be system demands, uh, during drought conditions as, uh, required by the state. So that would be determined based on flow projections we were talking about earlier. And then what's termed fire flow. So that's basically your water usage for firefighting. Um, so they wanna make sure that even when your system, uh, demand is happening, that you still have additional water capacity to be able to fight fires. Um, and that's calculated from the type of development, uh, around the water supply system. So the absolute minimum storage required by the state is based on your average daily demand in drought conditions plus the fire flow as required by local. Um, so that's the minimum. You can always provide more storage than that, but that's the minimum that you have to meet. Um, for the time being, GHD is recommending slightly more storage than that. Uh, because, uh, the fire flow, uh, requirements within town, um, uh, need to be confirmed just based on recent development, uh, there's been growth within town. So just being able to, uh, update the types of development that the water system is serving and determining the, uh, appropriate fire flow. That would allow us to hone in on the minimum storage. Uh, and in the time being, we would just recommend, uh, that we shoot slightly over on the system demand side of the required storage. Um, so that's the rule that we've been using, uh, in recent projects and that's what we, uh, recommend going forward until we get a chance to update some of the town's water system models and, uh, hone in on the actual fire flow requirements. So similar graph here to what we were looking at before for the water supply, but this is for water storage. Um, so the green line at the bottom there is kind of the minimum required by the state regulations. So you can see that current conditions, you have adequate storage, um, by about twenty twenty-three. Based on the growth projections that we were looking at before, we're expecting that you would need more storage volume. Um, but if we use kind of the recommended rule, um, where you're planning more on maximum day storage, it would suggest that we wanna start looking at additional storage now. Um, so that would kind of, uh, increase the priority of, uh, the water storage component of the projects that we're looking into. What's that proposed water storage tank look like? Uh, so at the end of the twenty-year build-out period, we're projecting a deficit of around seven hundred and ninety-two to nine hundred and nine thousand gallons, um, based on the maximum daily demand. Uh, so that, you know, just rounding for, uh, kind of nominal storage sizes. That's about eight hundred thousand to one million gallons of additional storage required, which again could be provided in a single tank. Um, the industry trend right now is composite tanks, which are, uh, concrete on the bottom and a steel tank at the top, which is pictured in that upper right corner. Um, the project cost is listed there around three and a half, four and a half million dollars. Uh, and we do have a, a proposed site picked out, um, just based on, uh, where the tank wants to be within the, uh, town's water supply system, just to balance out where the storage is, uh, compared to where the water usage is. Uh, and then also just the availability of land in that spot. Um, there's a proposed development in that area, so the recommendation would be to construct a tank before that, uh, development goes in, just so that we're not, uh, having to construct around, uh, new development. And then finally switching over to the wastewater system. Uh, so most of you are familiar with the, uh, wastewater treatment plant E and R upgrade that just wrapped up. Uh, some of you recently joined for a tour of the plant, uh, that we went on. Uh, that project was substantially completed in November two thousand seventeen. And the intent of that project was to implement enhanced nutrient removal technology, or E and R technology, uh, which was required in order to meet the stringent discharge limits that the state requires, um, for protection of the Chesapeake Bay, uh, that took effect, uh, recently. So that, uh, the project was successful. The, um, plant meet that permit, uh, requirements last year. Uh, and you can see the net result for the bay is removing tens of thousands of pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus, phosphorus, excuse me, um, from the bay each year, uh, when it reaches design capacity. So, uh, it's something the town should be really proud of, um, the plant's running well. Um, so that's what we just finished. Uh, and that project was at the town, uh, the plant's current capacity, which is zero point six eight million gallons per day. But same thing as the water system, uh, as we project flow going forward. Uh, it'll continue to increase as the town grows. Uh, so, uh, similar to before, there is kind of different rules you can use for projecting forward. That orange line would be, uh, you know, about your historical usage for existing connections. And then the future connections would be at that two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day per EDU that the state regulators, regulators are allowing for Leonard Town. Uh, the blue line would be assuming that two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day per EDU across the board. So that's a bit more conservative. So you can see based on that and then the horizontal gray line, which is the town's, uh, plant's current capacity of point six eight MGD, we're expecting additional capacity to be needed around twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So the town commissioned, uh, GHD to put together a study for what would be required to go from the town, or sorry, the plant's current capacity to what we think will be needed for that twenty-year projected growth. Um, so we came up with a design flow of about one MGD in the study that we prepared. Uh, and as we go to detailed design for the plant, that would be confirmed with the latest and greatest growth projections, 'cause those change every year. And same thing with the flow per EDU, we see that change from year to year depending on conditions in the service area. So we would confirm that as we go to detailed design. Um, but that study came up with about one MGD for the proposed capacity. Not only is the flow increasing, but on the wastewater side, we also have to consider higher strength wastewater coming into the plant. Um, that's been a recent trend in Leonard Town and, uh, Leonard Town is not the only municipality seeing that trend. Um, a lot of it is, uh, usually assumed to be tied to newer development where there is, uh, low-flow appliances, uh, that use less water while, uh, creating the same amount of, um, uh, kind of waste load. Uh, and then just having newer development, you've got newer pipes, so there's less leaks. There's less kind of, uh, diluted flow entering the system. So you end up with a more concentrated wastewater that's entering the system. And from all the new development in Leonard Town, uh, that tends to increase the overall concentration of the wastewater coming to the plant. So you can see we use biological oxygen demand, which is just one of the wastewater parameters, but that's kind of a proxy for the overall strength. So we're expecting the BOD concentration to increase from what is now about two hundred and sixty milligrams per liter up to three hundred and fifty milligrams per liter by the end of the twenty-year study period. So that's significant as well, 'cause not only is the flow increasing, um, but the concentration of the wastewater is increasing. So you kind of get a double-fold increase in the load that we're trying to treat. Meanwhile, while this is increasing, the town's discharge limits are capped under the, um, state, uh, um, E and R program to protect the bay. Um, they're saying you gotta keep at your, uh, existing discharge limits for those nutrients. And the key ones there are nitrogen and phosphorus, which have more stringent limits. So right now, um, we just, uh, did the E and R upgrade, uh, based on discharge limits of four milligrams per liter total nitrogen and zero point three milligrams per liter total phosphorus. But as these flows increase, uh, and you are capped at that same overall load, that means the concentration leaving the plant has to go down. Um, so we're expecting about two point eight milligrams per liter total nitrogen and point two one milligram per liter total phosphorus by the time we get to that one MGD flow. So at that point, we're kind of approaching the limits of, of a current technology. Um, and we have to look at alternative means of, uh, achieving that on a reliable basis. So what does the study recommend? Um, the major upgrades included would include a one million gallon, uh, storage volume. Uh, that's mandated by state regulations to protect shellfish harvesting waters, which are downstream from the, uh, treatment plant. Um, so that's a mandatory requirement. And right now that's being served by the town's second lagoon at the plant. Um, which if you can see in the photo there, there's one lagoon that looks like it's kind of brownish water and one that looks like it's clear water. So that clear water, uh, lagoon right now is just available for emergency storage, um, if necessary. Uh, but that, uh, as we move forward would be required to be converted to another biological treatment lagoon for nutrient removal. So instead of having that for emergency storage, you'd have to build a new tank and that's one of the major upgrades we're recommending. Um, as we, uh, deal with the increased flow and concentrations, we would need that second lagoon that's already there to be used for biological treatment. So that would have to be converted, uh, and then we would need some additional air to achieve that treatment. So some new blowers. And then the de-nitrateation filter system that was just put in at the plant currently has three modules or trains. We would need a fourth one to handle the additional flows. And same thing with the disinfection system that's at the plant. It's got three modules, it would need a fourth module going forward. The plant also has a tank for holding, uh, the waste sledge from the process until it can be, uh, dewatered and then taken off-site. Uh, currently the town, uh, plant has one of these tanks. So if anything happens to that tank, there, the operators of the plant are kind of limited in their options. Um, so one of the, um, recommended upgrades is to add a second sledge-holding tank to give them a little bit more flexibility in their operations there. So this would be the larger scale, uh, project of the three that we're, uh, talking about today, uh, with estimated, uh, twelve million dollar construction cost and fifteen million dollar project cost to handle the next twenty years of growth expected in the town. Um, of which that, uh, waste of holding tank would be about one million, uh, or one point one million dollars of that overall cost estimate. So big picture with the recommendations going forward. Um, because of the scale of the project, uh, the wastewater treatment plant will take the longest to design and construct. So we're recommending that one be, uh, you know, proceeding towards the detailed design stage just to keep on a schedule that'll have it ready by the time the additional capacity is necessary. Um, and we would have to, as we go into detailed design, confirm the, uh, recommended design capacity for, uh, expanded plant and also to pick a location for those new emergency storage tanks we were talking about. Uh, in conjunction with that, we could also be working on a water and wastewater master plan. Um, we're doing kind of a partial master plans, working on all these projects together. Um, but really with the amount of investment that the town is talking about, um, you know, we think it's worth at this stage updating the models that we have for the water and wastewater system, really getting an accurate picture for what's there, um, and how the new development will impact the existing systems and then using that to plan these projects, uh, you know, map out funding, um, and kind of prioritize the town's needs because we realize that, uh, we gotta work within budgets, uh, and, uh, resources available. And then finally on the water side, uh, continue to, uh, try and confirm where that new water well and storage tank site will be. Ideally, those want to be located close together, um, just for, uh, to capitalize on construction efficiency. Uh, so that would involve testing for groundwater capacity. Um, we would have to apply for the withdrawal allocations from the state. Uh, and then, um, refining the schedule for those projects, uh, alongside the development that would be taking place around where the tank and well could be potentially located. And then, uh, once we're ready, beginning detailed design efforts for that, those projects as well. So I think that's, uh, kind of the general approach that we're taking. Um, so I guess I can open it up to any questions, um, from the council.
What was the, uh, contract for the tank? It was twenty twenty-five for the well, twenty twenty-two for the expansion.
Yeah, so it depends on what we'll use. That's the one we were talking about. If you just go based on the state's minimum requirements, it would be in that same twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five timeframe. Um, so that would kind of put a, a back end on what we're expecting. Um, but really, uh, if we go through with the, um, water system modeling, that'll give us a better picture of what are the true fire flow requirements based on, on the development we're talking about and what does that, uh, mean for the storage departments?
And you mentioned four million for the, uh, tank, fifteen million for the expansion. What was the well?
Uh, the well is generally, you would, um, get, uh, specialty drilling. So a consultant to do that, but generally it's about one million or less, uh, project cost. Depending on the depth you need.
And then some of the council members had, uh, questions for the engineers, any?
If I could just add on the water sewer master plan. So that was like two thousand and four, I believe, we did the, the last plan. And it, it was extensive, there's the water side and the wastewater side where they did pipe size, condition of the pipes and, uh, fire flow, um, and did models. So they're talking about updating because there's been a significant amount of change since then. And, um, I can show you those maps if you want, uh, um, at some point. But it should, would show where there's deficiencies and, and where we need to really focus our efforts.
Those were two thousand and four.
So we've had Leonard's, you know, significant, um, development since then, a lot of growth in single tree.
Rebecca, anything?
Any questions from the council?
I think I'm good, very good report, appreciate it.
A lot to throw at us, uh, appreciate all your, uh, work on us, on this for us. Looking forward, moving forward.
Still be a lot of different, um, proposals coming forward. Based on this information, we have to keep moving. Um, we're looking at the water tower first, um, the ex, in conjunction with the expansion and then down the road, the well is what we're thinking at this point. Um, part of that is the discussion we had, uh, or need to have about the impact fee for the water side at this time. And Rebecca's done some work on that, um, you wanna just talk a little bit about that?
Um, well, just based on the estimates Jason gave today, three point five to four point five. I took four and started doing some math. And using that plus the projected capacity, the new water tower would need to serve. The impact fee, my recommendation at this point is gonna be of three thousand dollars. Now I think what we talked about at workshop was we'll have, um, in order to approve that, well, I'll come to another council meeting, we'll talk about the details and introduce an ordinance to it, to modify that at the next council meeting. And because it needs to be introduced by ordinance, then it wouldn't be approved and go into effect until May.
So it's currently at eighteen hundred and it's been that since two thousand and four.
So you're looking at a twelve hundred increase.
Right. And it's important for that to happen sooner than any change to the sewer impact fee because we have, anything that has not been allocated out of the sewer capacity from the existing flow, permitted flow, is set aside to pay for existing debt service. That's not the case for the water side. So I have unallocated EDUs on the water side that can be used to pay for debt service for the well and water tower projects. So it's important for that to be changed first because the sewer, as we get towards final design and have a better idea of what the cost is gonna be, then I can do the math there. And all the EDUs that would be allocated out of the new capacity would pay the, the new charge.
And we more recently had a change significantly, the sewer impact fee was like two thousand and seven, I think, something, two thousand and seven. There was a significant, um, change in that impact fee, so.
Do you remember what it was before?
Uh, fifth, um.
It was twenty-eight to fifty. And it went to thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
The sewer.
Yeah.
And that was mostly to pay for the E and R, or the, the E and R upgrade or the E and R?
Um, that would have been the E and R, yeah, E and R.
So we're gonna use the, the estimates they've given us for budgeting purposes, but then our next step is to update the model, basically, and then hone in on our capacities. basically, and then hone in on our capacities that we're looking for.
Good.
Thank you for coming down to present, um, to this. Are there, um, have we considered any, um, alternative supply sources, um, besides groundwater? Is that something we could look into or, or have you worked with other municipalities that have used any alternative sources?
Yep, yeah, we see both surface water and groundwater. Um, Leonardstown is actually fortunate in the quality of the groundwater that you have here generally, um, that, uh, for treatment, you're able to disinfect it, uh, at the well site and then put it straight into the distribution system. Um, so the groundwater that you have, especially from the well that you're currently using, is, uh, um, relatively good quality. Um, so that actually saves you from having to do, uh, more extensive treatment of the raw water. So, uh, in different locations, we do see, uh, you know, more treatment necessary based on, uh, usually surface water does require additional treatment steps. So that option would be available, but, uh, the town is fortunate that the, the raw water quality for the existing well is, um, adequate, uh, for kind of minimal treatment at this point. And that would be something that we would need to look for, so when we're talking about looking at the potential site of the new water supply, um, that, um, the raw water quality varies even within the town's existing service area. So the town, um, previously had other wells where just the raw water quality changes over time. Sometimes, uh, you have to abandon wells if the raw water quality drops. Um, so that would be something where we would be looking to kind of optimize, pick a spot where the raw water quality is already going to be good, uh, and that minimizes the amount of treatment that you have to do. So I think that's a possibility here.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a lot of, um, knowledge on, um, or with, um, reservoirs or desalinization or. But I assume that you guys work with other municipalities that might use those type of systems?
Right, um, so desalinization is far and away the most expensive type, so that's usually just on a, if, if, that's the last option. Um, groundwater and surface water can be comparable depending on just what the resources are and, um, you know, the raw water quality for here, um, the biggest surface area, their surface water source would be the bed, the Brenn Bay. Um, but that still has enough salinity where you, you, um, may run into issues and need to do some additional treatment steps. So, um, I think that's probably plays into the, uh, current supply being groundwater.
Okay, anything else for Jason?
Just one thing, and I think I'm right, but just my numbers here. Between the two water towers we have now, I, did you say it was in your PowerPoint, it's six hundred and eighty thousand gallons, is that right?
Uh, one of them's three hundred thousand gallons, one of them's five hundred thousand gallons, so you've got a total of eight hundred thousand gallons of storage right now. So we're talking about, you know, approximately doubling that, um, for one of your projections.
Okay, thank you.
Six eighty is the plant, um, capacity, or six hundred and eighty thousand gallons.
Okay, that's whatever, okay, that's it, thank you.
And just, we do have two other wells that are, um, for emergency that we don't use on a regular basis that we used to use, and then the arsenic levels changed, uh, the requirements, so that's when we drilled well number five. And the other two are just on standby. If we were in an emergency situation, we can use them on a temporary basis. Just a refreshment in that.
And what happened with wells one and two?
We abandoned two when we drilled five, or no, yeah, and three and four are still existing. I don't know, well, well, number one, was that the one on Church Street, do you remember?
Um, there used to be a well on the treatment plant that failed years and years ago in the late eighties, so that might have been well number one.
Anything else for Jason?
Jason, thank you very much, appreciate you coming down. Okay, LaShelle, get back to your.
My next item is adoption of ordinance number one eighty-nine, the Public Ethics Ordinance. And, um, this is an ordinance adding provisions to chapter nine of our Ethics Code of the Town of Leonardstown as required by the Public Integrity Act of two thousand seventeen. This ordinance was introduced last month at the February eleventh meeting, and we've had no, uh, inquiries since then. So it is, um, able to be, um, adopted today. And then it would go into effect twenty days from now, which is April first. Um, so you had, um, a copy last month and again in your packet showing the additional language that was required by the state um, to go into our, um, public, um, chapter nine. Any questions? And I did have our Ethics Commission review this and, um, and they had no comment, they were fine with it being achieved.
Any comments, questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number one eighty-nine for the purpose of updating chapter nine, Ethics Code of the Town of Leonardstown.
I second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
The next item is the, um, um, St. Mary's County Transportation Priority Letter was in your packet and Commissioner Hewitt is here just to kind of point out a couple of things and had a couple other items that he wanted to talk about.
Greetings from the Commissioner of the St. Mary's County. Uh, my goal here is as your Commissioner for Leonardstown, Hollywood, is to kind of tend your meetings, find out what's going on. Interesting stuff here, there's like twenty mi- twenty million dollars at stake, so it's a fantastic. But anyway, uh, first thing I want to talk about is we just put together a transportation plan. And one thing that's a little unique is, uh, we were told our newest delegate in Annapolis had if we switched our priority from having the, uh, uh, bridge, which has been our priority for so long, the bridge over the sound, and moved it up to the Great Mills Road Route, five intersection, which is outside of Leonardstown, of course. That, that seemed to be changed. Now, let's see if that works. But what I'm here to talk about is that we asked for, under the transportation plan, the, we support the Town of Leonardstown's request to extend the project from Leonardstown Hall, Leonard Hall driveway to the Leonard Grant Parkway intersection, and this is the sidewalks. We want to help you get the sidewalks, we're supporting it. LaShelle may have a little bit more information, but it's been kind of confusing. We thought we had it, now we didn't have it. So we just want you to know we're putting it out there. Another thing we're working on is a bus route, uh, system just for the Town of Leonardstown. Because your own municipality, we felt we could maybe get one for the Lexington Park, but it doesn't qualify. But we are looking at one here, uh, the timeline is probably around September. The number is probably around a hundred and eighty thousand. We are putting in a, a grant for, and again, I wish I knew what it was, J A R C Type Four Bus, which I guess is a, no.
Yeah, typical, typical bus.
That's very good, thank you. Now, uh, our Department of Public Works did say we overfund, which I'm not sure, but that's about some of the M T A requests and that that kind of overfunding of the money could be used for this. So something we're working on to try and get you your own bus system for the Town of Leonardstown. Because it would be nice if you had a route for people who want to go to lunch and go down to, you know, the, down below the hill down there.
Include the wolf in that route, yes, yes.
As opposed to one.
Yep.
Uh, other thing is we're, we want to report on a couple of things I want to report to you, impact fees. We recently had a commissioner who had a request about the impact fees and how they're designated. Because I've always been under the impression we designate so much for schools, so much for roads, so much for Lexington Parks. And it came back because what's happening, uh, is the school system does not need any new schools for the next eight to ten years. And so we have something like five or six million dollars tied up in collected impact fees for schools. Now, some of it came from the Town of Leonardstown because you guys do contribute to the impact fees of schools that comes to us.
Right.
You may want to, um, LaShelle, whoever your appropriate person is, reach out to our county administrator for some kind of an idea of how that works. Because, uh, it was said that we need to keep that function in there, the percentages, because we collect impact fees from the Town of Leonardstown for schools only. So point is, you may, you may want to have some clarification of how that money's going to be used. Because we're talking about taking some of that school money and using it on road line for us. Because we don't have the needs in the schools, doesn't make sense that it builds up and exists.
So yeah, I think Rebecca would be the, uh, one to look into that, of course. Thank you.
Get some definition.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the other thing is, is we're looking into Department of Housing Community Development, uh, they call it block, community block, right? I'm not sure if you.
We've had a lot of them.
Yeah.
Okay, you have, okay. But we're looking at some for Lexington Park and if we could help you out with maybe something for side, well, whatever you think.
Yeah, um, our elevator project was a block grant and, um, we've got over a million dollars for, um, Cedar Lane as well. That was a past due grant in recent years, so.
Sounds like we could take a lesson from that. Great. Uh, the other thing that just need to make you aware of is, uh, two things going on in Annapolis that you're probably aware of, but you should know, is one is the minimum wage, fifteen dollars an hour. Looks like it's going to be reality, it came out of the house, it was approved. Now, of course, it gets factored in through, I think, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the key is, uh, it just went, it's going to ten ten an hour come July. Now, it's impacting, it's going to impact our budget. Because if we have that come in, obviously our hourly's go up. And to maintain the, the differentials between, uh, income levels, everybody may need to go up. I use the term may need to go up. So it's something you may want to follow too for your impacts, for your, um, how, uh, for your people. And lastly is the Kerwin Commission. Uh, we're hearing that's coming whether we want it or not. Uh, it's, different people have different opinions on it. The whole idea though, it will raise the cost of paying for education. Very important thing, we all agree. Uh, I saw some numbers this afternoon that, uh, we could be looking at anywhere from twelve to sixteen million dollars more. Now, if the county has to come up with that kind of money, look, if it's unfunded mandate, you know what it means. Income taxes, property taxes, or some way of funding these types of things. So as we learn more, and I'm sure you're following me too, but my goal in coming to these meetings is to tell you what we're looking at more broadly.
Great, thank you very much. One, one comment I did, I was going to make later is the, uh, we just did a traffic study at Clark's Rest and Route Five. And with the connection to Leonard's Grant, uh, with Clark's, uh, Clark's Rest, uh, it looks like we're going to meet the warrants for, um, for a traffic light there.
So you have one at Route Five?
Right, right. There's, there's been a hundred accidents last four years between Compton Road and Hollywood Road on Route Five, so. Hopefully this will create a break, so reduce that.
We could get some relief on two forty-five because, you know, where it comes out that two forty-five from the hospital there and also.
Right.
That's getting tougher.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you, appreciate, uh, the, um, putting, putting all the, uh, projects in your, uh, in your letter to the state, thank you.
Just a.
Any questions for Commissioner?
I did have a question, um, how could we find out more about the, the bus route? I'd like to be somehow involved in.
That's what I was going to say, so I actually was, I sit on the county's, um, Transportation Advisory Commission.
Okay.
And we are looking, that was part of the discussion with updating their, their transportation plan. We started working on that last month, or last meeting. And this is great that this is in here and, and that is being worked on. Um, so it'll be done through that committee as well.
So LaShelle, keep us abreast of what's going on there.
Okay.
That's actually one of my, uh, budget request items for this year too, is to look into a, a small bus route that Rebecca and I met about.
Yeah, I think that would be nice. It has to be a small bus, you know, or don't want to be ruining the roads, right, with these big buses, it could be a little bus.
Well, the S D S buses already through town, so it would just be a dedicated route for Leonardstown so they don't have to ride all over.
We may actually have one or two extras that we just got. The thing is, we're working in, out of the direction in that route.
It'd be nice.
Yep.
Nice to bring Leonardstown, let Leonardstown all be kind of together, you know, let people be able to move around pretty freely, so it sounds good.
And the other thing was the, uh, two forty-five sidewalk project, just, um, since you mentioned it. So where we're at with that, um, they have, State Highway has pretty much finished the design. We know what the impacts would be. The, the complication with this phase two is there's significant, um, stormwater management facilities that have to be built that we didn't have to deal with, with phase one, which was from the college out to the governmental center. So, um, we, I now have the plaques of how it would affect any property owners in there. Uh, we're getting ready to schedule a similar meeting that we did with the phase one homeowners where we would bring them in for a nighttime meeting. State Highway would have representatives come down and talk about what the facilities would look like, how much impact to each person's property and, uh, what those facilities would, um, how it would impact their properties. And then we, we need to get buy-in from all the homeowners along there. Um, it impacts, um, the front of the governmental center, the front of Smecko, which we just met with them, Jada and I did last week. And they've designed around that, so that property is a very significant portion of phase two, and that's already taken care of. So, um, that's where we're at. We'll be scheduling a nighttime meeting probably at this location um, and having State Highway come down to work with those homeowners. And we did the same thing at the college, um, for phase one, it was very successful. And then once we have the buy-in from the homeowners, then it can proceed. Any other questions for Commissioner?
Well, currently, are there sidewalks in front of the governmental center or?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, but on the other side of the street, um, they only go to right around Madison Street.
Like Madison Street, okay, that's right.
It's supposed to go all the way down to.
To Leonard's Grant.
Leonard's Grant.
To Leonard's Grant.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next item is regarding the snow sidewalk, snow removal contract. Hopefully we're done with it for this year, but we do need to get something in place. I talked about it last month. The original contractor that we had was Bowles Farm and they had requested that the sidewalk snow removal be separated from the road's snow removal packet. Um, when we bid it the last time, um, they just couldn't, uh, handle, um, the labor that was needed for the sidewalk as well. So we bid it separately in October and Joe Goldsmith, Smith was the low bidder. Um, and Bay Country was the second, uh, second bidder. Mr. Goldsmith has never been able to supply the required labor to carry out the contract and he has since in writing at, requested to cancel his contract. So Bay Country has had to step in both times that we've needed help. Um, and, um, so they had, um, proposed a labor cost of forty-five dollars an hour versus Mr. Goldsmith, which was thirty-five dollars an hour, but he was unable to provide those services. So what we would like to do is just, um, put this sidewalk snow removal back in with the road contract, which is Bay Country currently, they have, were the low bidder on the road portion. It works a lot better anyway because they can come clear the sidewalks first, it goes out into the street and then they come in and remove the. It's been difficult, it would have been difficult had we had two separate contractors anyway. So, um, I think it'll work a lot better, um, having it all as one contract.
It probably makes, like you just said, communication a lot easier, you know, just having one person do it. Now, for the sidewalks, can you just refresh my memory, is it just the downtown, what they're focused on?
Downtown, we, um, a couple of years ago, we, uh, we actually took it all the way out to Birch Mart.
Okay.
Um, on the one side. And then the, last year we added, um, to going out on St. Elizabeth's side, so all the way. Um, it'll be Fenwick Street where the businesses are open and then the square and then out to Birch Mart on both sides. So we would need action to, um, to, um, add that, to award the co- sidewalk snow removal to Bay Country.
All right, I move to award the sidewalk snow removal contract to Bay Country Enterprises for a term ending November twelfth, twenty twenty, plus two-year options to coincide with the road snow removal contract. The original sidewalk contract was canceled two twenty-five and nineteen.
I'll second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Just have a quick, so when we do the budget next year, we'll have this, we'll use this updated number versus?
I generally don't use hourly numbers.
Okay.
We take a trend analysis for every year.
Oh, okay, what was used, oh, yeah.
We've added streets and use it that way.
Gotcha, very good.
Since it's an unknown, so we, we do, uh, we wait till after the snow removal is done before we do any road projects so we know kind of what the actual number we have and how much we used.
I will just add that, you know, Bay Country, this is the first year they had the snow removal and we haven't had any complaints at all with them, so.
No, I thought they did a good job.
Yeah, I was going to say the same, they've done a good job, so.
Yeah, they worked very well.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next item is, um, to authorize the mayor to sign a lease for Edward Jones. So, the agreement for the sale of our condo unit on Par- on, um, Courthouse Drive, number three hundred, with Robert and Lily Mattingly, is still moving forward with closing scheduled prior to March thirty-first. Um, we have extended it a couple of times, so we are, um, on track to close from, by March thirty-first. The proposed tenant is Edward Jones, and their lease is ready to be signed, but because we're still the property owners, um, they've requested that we sign the lease so that things can be, um, finalized prior to the sale. This is similar to what we did with the Bank of, Bank of America lease in our other unit, number three oh one. Um, so, we don't feel there's any risk involved with that. Um, if for some reason this sa- sale fell through, then, um, we would have income, just like we do with the Bank of America lease.
And Robert and Lily are here, anything you want to add to? Comments?
Uh, it's just that we've reviewed the lease, and we're fine with all the terms that are, that are in.
And, uh, so, I mean, you're, you're still moving forward with the sale, and it just, just a matter of timing. They, they need this lease signed, so you can get in there and do the, do the changes, so, okay? Any questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to authorize Mayor Burris to sign the lease for rental condo unit number three hundred to Edward Jones.
I'll second.
Motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Just to remind you, the, uh, Chamber Business After Hours is here March twenty-seventh up here in the town hall. I hope everyone can make it. Uh, we have, um, asked for, um, donations from L B A, um, members for the, um, door prizes, and they've been very generous in those, so it should be a nice event. And then the state of the town is, um, was delayed, it usually is in February or March. It's actually scheduled for April twelfth at, uh, seven thirty in the morning at the College of Southern Maryland. So, hopefully, everyone will be able to attend that as well.
And, uh, yeah, Commissioner Hewitt, make sure that gets on your calendar also, please.
I sent the invitation just recently, so hopefully, the, for both Business After Hours and the, uh, State of the Town. So, I re- I recently sent this.
What day, Lechelle, was the chamber one here at the town, they said?
Uh, March twenty-seven.
Okay.
What time is that?
Um, five.
Five thirty, five, it's normally-
Five thirty, it might be five thirty.
Five to six thirty.
Five, five to six thirty, yeah, yeah. Anything else?
Um, well, I guess I just, so, we have done, uh, several benches at the Wharf that people have, um, dedicated to other, um, to, to other people. Um, Georgie Guy had one, um, there was, um, recently one for Charles Downs.
Charles Downs, yeah.
Um, I think we're at like five of them. Um, and she doesn't, actually, she hasn't called me back yet, so she doesn't know this, but, um, um, for Melissa Willie's family, um, or Melissa Willie's, the mother.
Mother, right.
The, the, the girl that got shot at Great Mills, um, her family wanted to do a bench. And when our company, Victor Stanley, who we've been dealing with for twenty years, um, heard, uh, who it was for, they've now are going to donate the bench, which is about, um, three thousand dollars, so it was really generous, but-
Very nice.
So, I have a, a message in to the mother to tell her, but, um, she doesn't know it yet, but I just wanted everybody to know, because this company has been great to work with. All the benches up in, up in the square and down at the Wharf are, are from Victor Stanley. They're a, a company out of Dunkirk, um, so, they recognize the name, and I thought it was very generous of them to volunteer. Yeah, that's very nice.
Very nice.
That's all I have.
That it, okay? Uh, as far as my report, just want to remind everyone the downtown plan that you, uh, agreed to last month. When's the first committee meeting?
Tuesday.
This, this Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, I'm a week from now.
A week from Tuesday, okay, all right, so, yeah, looking forward to getting that started.
To all the committee members that we-
Yeah, everybody agreed, but we talked about it last month.
Yep. Yep. Uh, I just want to remind everyone about the facade improvement grant, that deadline is May, okay? Um, Clark's Rest is doing very well, looks like they've got about twenty-five homes under construction as we speak, so. Then, uh, I say, John, with, um, Metta's at Town Run, how are things out there?
Wet.
I was going to say, yes, but I understand you've got-
While we're moving along, we have two sold.
I was going to say, I understand you've got like four that are sold, so. Okay, great. And the last thing is the pier, we've got that ready to go out to, to bid here, next, pick and sell.
Hopefully, by the end of this month.
Great, okay. That's all I had, uh, if anybody had any questions, but, uh, events, Tyler?
Um, so, uh, the main one coming up that I know Brandy and everyone's preparing for is, uh, the Earth Day on Sunday, April fourteenth, from twelve to four thirty P M. Uh, the Coastal Arts Market, uh, is Saturday, April twentieth, at the Wharf from nine A M. to three P M. And the car show on the square is April twenty-eighth, uh, from eight A M. to four P M. And then additionally, there's Zumba Around Town, which is, uh, every Saturday, uh, in March and April, from eight thirty to nine thirty in the morning. Uh, Brandy, was there anything else that I missed?
Uh, you know, uh, as you mentioned, the, uh, Earth Day is taking place on April fourteenth. We're organizing with the vendors and the performers. Uh, the town website has been updated, the, uh, event section, uh, there's now a separate, uh, page for every event, uh, where we'll provide, uh, information about the events, the details, uh, road closures, parking, including other plans. Uh, so, it's a lot more readily accessible to everyone. Um, and also, the online event calendar has been updated throughout the end of the year. And we have, uh, major events we're working on in addition to Earth Days, the, uh, Leonardtown Summer Music Festival. Uh, we made the announcement, um, a couple of weeks ago on Facebook, and it was huge response, over five thousand, um, responses on the, um, Facebook page. And, uh, we have the schedule, um, we've got, uh, the concert su- the series is running from, uh, May eighteenth, that kicks off with a concert, um, the U S Navy Dan Country Current, uh, Portland Square in honor of, uh, Armed Forces Day. And it goes through September seventh, on, in a, the valley with the Bush, the Bush Woodstop Three Music Festival. Um, and that's coincides with the fiftieth anniversary of Woodstop. Uh, and additionally, we're working with the organizers of the Potomac Jazz and Seafood Festival. Uh, we're, it's their twentieth anniversary, and, uh, as we've mentioned before, um, a lot of the businesses in town are planning, uh, tie-in events and, and doing special offers. Um, that information is all on the website as well. And the only other thing is that, uh, we are going to have a visit from the box by Zip Trip. Uh, that's going to take place on Friday, August second, the day before, or, um, day before, uh, the church party.
Oh, that's cool.
Uh, they're going to be highlighting a lot of the different areas, uh, in town, the Wharf. Uh, they're going to, uh, look into venues, uh, surrounding the arts and entertainment district, um, and look at also some of the local teams and, and local bands, so, really want to cover, uh, Leonardtown.
So, I don't remember, it was like twenty fourteen, maybe, they were here.
They've been here twice before, and, uh, you know, y'all were-
Yeah, they did the bookstore, and, um, my wife and I and the kids were in there as they were doing, they interviewed us about the town.
So, yeah, so.
That's how you won.
Two, four years before the election.
Lady that one, yeah.
Definitely looking forward to them coming down, great exposure.
That's cool, yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, Hayden, community development, planning?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Other than everything that's going on? Which is good. Kristy, so, do you tell any?
No, don't have anything, yes, I mean, we gotta-
Yep, today's presentation was about that, so. Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, my report's very short, but Southern Maryland Municipal Association is on Wednesday, March thirteenth this week. If anybody would like to go with me, please let me know. I'll be leaving here probably around four thirty, and that's in La Plata. And our next Maryland Municipal League Board of Directors meeting will be the end of April. And just to touch base on a little bit of community development, uh, the Slice House, I'm really looking forward to that. Looks very nice, I stopped in there the other day, so, having a pizza place back in downtown.
You're like their biggest promoter.
What's that?
You're like their biggest-
Hey, I'm ju- I'm just sharing, sharing on Facebook. No, I'm looking forward to it, it's going to be nice. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, and I won't be able to make it Wednesday, I'm out of towns.
Though I had it on my agenda to pick you up, so, I'll make that change, Harry, thank you.
And Mary, business, business development and retention?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jay, for, uh, ruining my, the Slice House that we're talking about, but I appreciate this stuff. Jump right on me. Uh, Slice House is coming, Duda Deli is actually getting close to opening, we're probably with the next, you know, uh, month and a half on that. Bourbon and Boz is going in, a new retail store, or, and re- it's not new, it's a retail store moving from Shepherds, I think, over to a, a standalone storefront, so that'll be good to fill up Leonardtown. And I did want to talk, since we're going to have, you know, the Chamber of Commerce here, I sent out an email, and I said, I don't know if Leonardtown would like to have a booth at the business showcase, and I don't know.
Well, when you weren't here, um, that works out, we did talk about it a little bit.
Okay.
Not sure L B A, or the L B A is a member of the Chamber, so we need to check on that, and we need to check the price also.
It's usually two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's pretty reasonable. Um, but I think, you know, since they, he's come over, uh, the Chamber of Commerce has come over to here, it'd be nice if we supported them, and I think it'd be a great event, I'd be happy to work the booth, it's a, it's a good time.
Okay, so, yeah, well, you know, you missed a boat, you know, we're going to be checking into it, so.
Well, we better check quickly, cause usually the tables are-
I can find it on their website, like, we were looking for the amount, so I don't know.
Okay.
I'll have to, I'll check it again tomorrow.
Okay. And that's it, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was the Hamptons, I did stop down there, um, Friday, dropped off some, uh, some things for their goodie bags for the new tenants, and they've got, I think she said fourteen leases signed already, so, so, that's moving along too, so, great. Anything else? Uh, entertain a, um, motion for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.